All right. Call to order, the Gladstone Planning Commission, Gladstone City Hall, 525 Portland Avenue, Gladstone, Oregon. Today is November the 20th, 2018. It's approximately 6:31. Let's salute the flag. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to do the roll call first. Sorry. Let's call the roll.
Commissioner Langston?
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Malachi?
Here.
Commissioner Poole? Commissioner Wentz?
Here.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Here.
Chair Rowlett?
Here. Let's salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Welcome. It's a huge gathering tonight. Tonight, I'm going to read the agenda for tonight. The first thing we'll do is the consent agenda. And then if there's any new correspondence or material which we have, we'll look at that, or at least acknowledge that we have it. And then the planning commission will approve the minutes of the October 16th, 2018 meeting. And then I want to have a minute if anybody in the public has any business that's not related to our public hearing tonight. So anything that you want to say pretty much is fine, within a very brief amount of time. Then we'll do the regular agenda, which is the monthly planning report for Melissa. And then we're going to have a public hearing on the renovation and construction at the Glen River Apartments. And then if the public wants to make any comments or anything after that hearing is closed about anything other than that hearing, that we'll have an opportunity to do that. And then the planning commission will discuss any business from the past or present, and then we'll adjourn. So that's tonight's agenda. And so let's get started.
So before we accept the consent agenda, I would like to make a comment for the transcriber and for the planning commission. When it comes down to the very end where it specifies whether we said yes or no, one of the things we had talked about before was that if we have no votes, it would be ideal for the city council if we would state why and have the transcriber include that. We did not do that last time, and the transcriber has not done that. We can let it slide this time, but we need to be better about that so the city council has that information.
Tammy, what do you think about that?
I'm sorry, I could hardly hear you. I'm sorry.
So on the end, when we say yes or no, on whether we approve something, sometimes we have like one person who says no, like I did. And we had talked maybe a year ago about, we wanted to make sure that the reason that we said no gets forwarded to city council.
Okay.
That did not happen. I think that was on us this time. I think we did not discuss why.
Okay.
But we want to make sure that we discuss it and also that we have the transcriber include that in what goes forward to city council.
It goes matter of record, yeah.
Can you make a note of that in follow-up with our?
Yeah, we don't need it this time, but just for future reference.
That's all right. We did agree to that.
Okay.
Anybody else on the consent agenda? Anybody want to make a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Made by Malachi and seconded by Natalie Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no or nay. None opposed, agenda is passed. Any additions, additional correspondence? Tammy?
I have none.
Okay, we do have a bunch of stuff, new.
That is part of the public hearing for today, yes.
Okay. So no letters from the public or anything?
No, that's correct.
Business from the public, anybody that wants to speak about anything other than the public hearing that we'll have shortly? Anything is fine. Nobody wants to speak? Very good. Next on the agenda is the regular agenda is the monthly planning report for October 2018.
Melissa Aaron's here, city planner. So you'll see that the calls have dropped off a bit that we're getting from the public. However, we have had an uptick in land use applications and pre-applications. So we are seeing kind of a busier time period for upcoming development and land use reviews. And you'll see that in the pre-application conferences listed there. There's the Children's Golf Course Clubhouse Project, but they have not finalized their plans yet, but that should be coming to you in the near future. There was a proposal to have a school on the Gladstone First Baptist site, church site. We had a pre-application conference with them, and I'm not sure of the status that they're going to be proceeding forward with full application. And then, of course, there's the Gladstone City Hall and the Civic Center project.
Any status updates regarding Carter's Plan?
Yeah, I was gonna, it wasn't on here because we had our meeting with them, I think it was Sean's not in here, I think it was last week.
How did that go?
The end of last week. Great. So they're making progress. They have a new manager. He's, I guess, part of their construction management team, but he's taking this on and he seems to be very proactive. So we're working with him to get them a copy of the landscaping plan that was adopted as part of the design review so they can understand if they want to just restore or if they want to add on. So we're currently coordinating with them, and they're actively making steps towards remediating the violation out there, so.
Good. Do we know what they're digging?
No.
What is that out there that they didn't, they weren't forthcoming with what they were digging out there?
No, I know that they added gravel and cobble, but I wasn't aware that they were actively digging.
They're actually doing some kind of construction projects. I was wondering about building permits, if there's any building permits.
Thank you, Chair Rowlett. Because the last time I was there too, it's like, they're doing stuff.
It's more than just landscaping. I mean, you can see where they're, it looks like some kind of construction.
I can ask county building codes to follow up and send an inspector out there and see if what they're doing would require a building permit. On their enforcement side, they can follow up if it's a building code violation, but through planning, we would have to do it through the same design review to see if it was something we could approve, which they will be submitting. So thank you, I'll follow up on that and keep you posted.
It almost looks like they're, you know how if you go to Oil Can Henry's or something, they've got a pit? It almost looks like that's what they're constructing.
It's like they're, you know, they've got something in mind besides landscape, unless they're going to put a pool in maybe or something like that.
Yes.
Hot dogs and a swim.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
So next, we're going to go to our public hearing, and it's file number Z-0481-18-D That's a lot of numbers. It's renovation of existing affordable housing apartment buildings and construction of a new 448 square foot office building site, River Glen Apartments, 1055 Rizley Avenue, Gladstone, Oregon. And so I'm going to open the public hearing and read this rather lengthy introduction. And it's just good to know all this stuff. This is a quasi-judicial land hearing, and the public hearing is what I just read, is called the order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report. Questions, if any, by the hearing body for staff. Then we will open the public hearing for testimony, and time will be allotted for applicants, persons in favor of the application, persons opposed, persons that are neutral also, rebuttal from the applicants. Then we will close the public hearing once all, everybody's testified and had a chance to say everything they need to say. No other comments will be heard from the public at that time, so when the public hearing's closed, we're not going to answer questions from the public. And the public shouldn't testify unless we reopen the public hearing. So we'd like to get all that done after we open the public hearing. Then final comments by staff. Questions of staff, if any, by the commission, and discussion and deliberation by the commission. A decision may be made by the planning commission at the close of the public hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. Any party may request the continuance of this hearing, or may request the record remain open for seven days. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive, so there won't be any mail or stuff advertised or printed, this is the notification. To be a party, you have to testify or have submitted in writing material, and that'll make you a party to the hearing, if you want to call for a continuance. If you wish to speak, please come forward to the microphone. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. In making a decision, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulation. Those criteria are identified in the staff report and are available in the room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria and other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. Please note, if you fail to raise an issue of sufficient specificity to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal that issue to the city council or the Land Use Board of Appeals. Unless the commission is making a recommendation to the city council, the commission's decision will be the city's final decision in this matter unless appealed to the city council. Tonight, we'll make a final decision, so unless it's appealed, the decision will be final. An appeal must be filed within 15 days and in accordance with Chapter 17 dot 92 of the Gladstone Municipal Code. Failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity allowed the commission to respond to issues precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, I would like to ask the members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Have members of the commission visit the site.
I actually work for the organization that will be doing the rehab work. There's been rumor that I might be on the project, but I don't get a bonus or anything for this project, and that's it.
Natalie?
I've been there twice.
So I went by. I did speak to a couple of residents who were standing there. One of them, I talked with a little bit longer, and they did explain some of the offers you have made as far as helping them during the transition period, and also expressed where they think the building is going to go, because we didn't have that information. They specifically said, just for the record, they said they think it's going to go where the playground area is. We can discuss that for, once we get to your time. And the person I talked to, his name was Joe, he also said he does think this is going to be a really good upgrade for them. None of the residents I talked to knew about this meeting tonight, though, so just.
And I stopped in Chataboo, Clayton, Cowhurst briefly at their offices on McLaughlin Boulevard. We did not discuss this application, but rather just, you know, I was curious about their organization, which is a local organization, so we did not discuss this application at all, and I did visit the site.
I haven't talked to anybody about anything to do with it, and I actually, I am familiar with the place, but I didn't go over there. I used to deliver meals and wales there, so.
I did visit and drove through the property today. I did not talk to anyone about it.
What do you think about conflict of interest if you work for somebody that's involved in this project?
I'm not an attorney, so I can't give official legal advice, but in every situation where there's been a planning commissioner who has some type of financial interest, if it's job-related, they've recused themselves. If it would benefit you to get the project approved, then it's usually a reason to.
It doesn't benefit me in any way, other than it just adds to my workload, but I'm more than happy to do what anybody else can do.
You know, I think, you know, you can disclose that nothing is going to affect your decision, but to me, if you're being paid by a company that's directly involved in this project, I think that it could be a conflict of interest, a financial conflict.
Okay.
So that's, you know, I would like you to make the decision if you want to step down from the hearing.
Okay, I'll step down.
Okay, and then if you would, just, you can just sit in the audience.
Yeah, definitely. What's that?
You could just sit, you know, just go ahead and sit down in the audience. Anyway, you know, it's a good idea, I think, and I appreciate that you're willing to do Anybody else have any, anything before we start? Continuing on with this long thing that I just read. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter? Hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any planning commission members' ability to participate? Hearing none. The staff will now present the staff report.
Thank you. So I want to start off by saying that we scanned the entire file in, but the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven somehow did not get into Attachment A, so there were site plans in the attachments, and I did not have time, my schedule was so impacted the last week, to double check. So apologies on our end, those were intended to be part of the package that you received, but we did manage with collaboration from the applicant to get you the site plan now. The staff report described where the office is going to go, but understand that that was supposed to be in the attachment for your benefit, so apologies for that. It's been very busy with a lot of last-minute kind of needs from other city projects going on, so thank you for your understanding on that. So I will begin the public hearing. We have a PowerPoint today. So it is a designer view application, number Z-0481-18, but it is combined.
Can you hold on a second?
Yeah.
Do you want to give them information about relocating?
About what?
If they need to move.
Oh, yeah, yeah. If anybody wants to get up and move, you can sit, stand, sit on the table, do whatever you want, we're, you know, we're fine with that. But the PowerPoint might be something if you're really interested in the project, you know, stuff. That's a good thing to see. Sorry. Go ahead.
No, no problem. So this is combined with a habitat conservation area map verification, as well as a water resource area determination, because of the presence of the environmental overlays on or adjacent to the site. So you can see the project location is that entire apartment complex directly below the Olson Wetlands. It's been there since the 1970s. The building permit that was an exhibit on the staff report says it was built in 1971 to 1972. So the only development that's subject to the design review is the 448 square foot office building on the site. Because the apartment buildings are considered legally non-conforming, that they've been there before current zoning code and design review requirements, the renovations and development that's going on with upgrading the apartments is all normal repair and maintenance per the code. So the designer view, for designer view purposes, we're looking at the site as if it's just a vacant site with a new office on it.
Can I pause you there?
Mm-hmm.
I just want to make sure that it's on the record for people.
Yeah.
So like when McDonald's came before us and they did a facelift, and they had to go through the new design review to meet the new code.
Yep.
Can you just be very explicit on the record why this is different?
Yeah, and so we explained that in the application as well, that they're not adding any new units, they're not expanding the footprint of the apartments. The repairs that they're doing are exterior siding, so I can, if you want me to, I'm happy to read the exact code section.
I'm mostly for the audience benefit and also for the record. I mean, I did read through it, I just want to make sure it's clear for the record why we're not requiring them to be up to code.
I can go to that section if you just give me a moment here. So in Section 1776 point 020, non-conforming uses and non-conforming developments, number three is maintenance. Normal maintenance of structures and premises that are part of a non-conforming use shall be permitted provided there are no significant use or structural alterations. Normal maintenance may include painting, roofing, siding, interior remodeling, electrical work, plumbing work, repaving of access roads and parking loading areas, replacement of landscaping elements or other similar tasks. Normal maintenance does not include increasing the number of dwelling units, constructing new structures, or construction additions to existing structures except to the extent that an addition is necessary to render a structure accessible to the disabled, so ADA access.
Thank you.
So because of the presence of the environmental overlays, we did require those for just the site in general. The renovations and proposed work occurs within those overlays, so for those applications, we're looking at the site as a whole, but only the office on the site is subject to design review. So the zoning designation is MR, multifamily residential. It has a high-density residential comp plan designation. It's 2.19 acre site. You can see that red outline there is the habitat conservation area, and then underlaid in the same line is the water quality resource area. That pink line on the screen is the 50-foot buffer from the water quality resource area, and I will go in depth in those overlays on a later slide. So public noticing was done per the code requirements. It's the owners of record, as identified on the most recent Clackamas County Property Tax Assessment, so I'm not sure why there were residents that weren't informed. We were only required to notify the property owner, but I would have imagined that they would have some sort of public noticing going out, but maybe they're waiting for the building permit phase to get completed, I'm not sure. Clayton can probably speak to that later on. So the proposed site plan, which is shown on the next page, and shows the location of the office building, I'll skip to that really quickly. So you can see it is where the parking, or the, I'm sorry, the playground area is, in the center of kind of the apartment complex, it's that smaller building there, so far away from kind of the environmental overlay area and the edges of the property. So it's my understanding that there currently are two employees who are functioning as office management and apartment services, who are working out of kind of a converted laundry room type situation, and they need somewhere to have, you know, better suited for office work, so that's the purpose of the office building proposal. So it wouldn't be bringing in more employees necessarily than are already existing on-site, wouldn't be expanding, you know, traffic impacts or needs from utilities on-site. So the proposed building is an accessory use to the multifamily complex, allowed per Code Section 1714030. It meets all the criteria in that section, so that's what we're approving under. We're looking at the whole site as part of the designer view, though, because it opens up the site as a whole, so we made sure that the site was compliant with current landscaping and parking requirements. It in fact exceeds those, so landscaping, for example, is 39% right now, and the code only requires 15. They're not doing any proposed changes to the landscaping, they're just maintaining it as is, and no additional landscaping area is required per the code. They are proposing nine new covered bike parking spaces, even though four are only required in the code, so that'll be a benefit to the residents. Let's see, what else? So there's a clarification in the staff report in the lighting section. Under general sighting and design, on page seven, we've been working with the applicant, the existing lighting on-site presumably was constructed with the initial apartment complex, so there were concerns over off-site lighting impacts, and now opening the whole site up, we have the opportunity to improve that situation. So in here, we had put that they were going to be shielding all of the lights. It sounds like from their analysis that it's only necessary to shield two of the lights to avoid off-site light spill, because those are the only two that have any impact off-site currently. So we'll be taking a look at that with the submitted lighting plan as part of condition compliance.
Is that the ones near the neighbors or near the roads?
They're the ones, here we go. So you can see in red, they're those ones closest to the bottom of the screen, I wish I had a pointer, and they're directly adjacent to the apartment complex next door, so I guess those are the ones with the overspill right now.
Yeah, it did seem rather dark in there, because I drove through in the evening.
Okay. We know that's been an issue with other apartment complexes in the city, so through that condition, we have an opportunity to look at that more carefully, but just want to make that clarification, that they're only proposing that on two lights. There was also concern from the city, city staff and management, and public works, that there's an issue with residents occupying the accessway in the road area, and the sidewalk adjacent to the road as kind of a smoking area, because the residents apparently aren't allowed to smoke anywhere on the property, so they have nowhere to go, and understandably, they don't want to leave their home to smoke and then come back. So we worked with the applicant, who are very understanding, to kind of revise their proposal to look at other opportunities on-site. They have proposed to add a designated smoking area with seating and cigarette collection station in the northwest corner of the property, so that would hopefully relocate citizens alongside the road to a safer and probably more pleasant area.
There were five people out there when I drove through, and some, two people across the street as well.
So that's not a code requirement, but it is kind of something that we worked out with the applicant, so we're appreciative for that, and it seems like it'll improve the situation out there. So for the habitat conservation area overlay, it is a set overlay, so it's not site-specific. It is up to the applicant to agree with what the overlay is shown as, or they can challenge it. In this case, the applicant agreed with the habitat conservation area as mapped. The proposed office building is more than 100 feet from the HVA overlay, so it is exempt from needing a development permit or a construction management plan. Likewise, the maintenance and alteration, the just upgrades and renovation, they are exempted in the code from needing a development permit or construction management plan as well. So there was no further habitat conservation area permits required, other than just a map verification where the applicant agreed with the existing overlay. So water quality resource area overlay, you can see the blue there is Title III wetlands that were mapped, it's part of the metro effort, and then the pink line is the 50-foot buffer line as mapped. So part of the code, if there's any uncertainty for water quality resource areas, the code requires us to look at site specifics, so it's a little bit different than the habitat conservation area. So we worked with the applicant to have a wetland delineation submitted, so that was done for the off-site wetland complex and DSL. done for the off-site wetland complex, and DSLK has concurred with that delineation, that was included in Attachment A. And I have it on the next slide too, that you can see the ditch or perennial stream, although it's denuded of vegetation apparently, runs along the backside of the property there, and is considered a regulatory wetland, so it's part of the water quality resource area. And then also a 50-foot buffer out from that is part of the WOOCRA and subject to the So the proposed office is located over 50 feet from the edge of that, so it's exempt from needing further review. However, the code for water quality resource areas for exemptions reads a little bit different, so kind of had some creative communication with the applicant to see what we could do to improve the wetland and find compliance with the code. So Section 1727040, number two, lists uses allowed under prescribed conditions within the water quality resource area, and includes additions, alterations, rehabilitation, or replacement of existing structures, roadways, driveways, accessory uses, and other development that do not increase existing structural footprints in the water quality resource area, where the disturbed portion of the water quality resource area is restored and vegetation is replaced with vegetation identified on the GLADSO Native Plant List. So the proposed maintenance and remodeling work will not increase the structural footprint of the existing structures. And the applicant, it's a HUD-funded project, so financial kind of considerations are part of what the applicant, the ability the applicant has to work with, and how much they can do or kind of compromise. So we've been working with Clackamas Soil and Water Conservation District, who have funding opportunities for revegetation programs and habitat enhancement.
Would that be inside the ditch or inside the fence?
So revegetation would occur in the upland areas, because it's a perennial stream, so it runs throughout the year, and you would want it on the upland portion, kind of willows and types of vegetation that doesn't need running water all the time. So the applicant is actively coordinating with the conservation district to hopefully fund some type of revegetation out there. The code is a bit unclear whether the disturbed area means existing disturbed or disturbed by the development, so given that kind of lack of clarity there, we worked out a compromise with the applicant. So they are going to be, you can see in the condition in the staff report, they're going to be coordinating with Clackamas County Soil and Water District to come up with a planting plan and see what they can fund. And it's something that the applicant has proposed, that we're not requiring as a condition of approval to meet code compliance, so. And then through that condition, we would be able to track the replanting efforts of the upland riparian corridor of the mapped wetlands. It would also function to help with water quality and drainage on that side of the property. As such, the proposed maintenance and remodeling improvements within the water quality resource area can be considered an allowed use under prescribed conditions, so the development standards of the rest of the Section 1727045 do not apply. So planning staff is recommending approval of the proposed project with six standard conditions and 10 special conditions of approval. So some of those I've already talked about, lighting, signage is kind of just our standard condition, saying we want to look at any signage that comes through and make sure it meets the provisions of subsection 1752, ADA access, sanitary and sewer, public works and fire need to give their kind of sign-off on the building permit before we approve it on a planning level. We have special condition number seven for the WOOCRA, the water quality resource area, final occupancy, which is the standard one that we have on there, that prior to issuance of a final occupancy permit, all conditions of the design review approval should be met. Design review plans, just if any changes in the approved design review plans, they need to be submitted to us prior to execution. Any departure from the approved design review may cause revocation of building permits or denial of the final certificate of occupancy. And then there's our Endangered Species Act, which we have on every design review. So here's the formal staff recommendation, and I'm available for questions if anything comes up.
Anything else about the staff report?
There is no water or sewer connection for the office. I'm looking at it, and all I see is office and electrical, I don't see any plumbing of any kind.
It's my understanding they were going to tie into the existing system, not going to new utility permit, but Clayton can probably weigh in on the specifics of that.
Yeah, because I don't see anything about a restroom or a sink or anything, so I was just curious how that was going to.
Anything else? The applicant may now present testimony and arguments.
Yeah, Tammy will get it up for you, and here you go.
Can you actually give your name and address first?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay. Yeah, good evening, Commissioner and community members. I'm Clayton Crowhurst. I'm an associate housing developer with Northwest Housing Alternatives. Our offices are located 13819 Southeast McLaughlin Boulevard, Milwaukee 97207? 222.
222, probably is it, or over there?
Yeah, let's go with that. So I'd like to give a brief introduction to our organization before kind of delving into the project here. And do you mind just tabbing through there? And that's the left and right buttons here. So our organization was founded in 1982. I'll let you all kind of read through some of the facts here. A few highlights though, is that we got our start here in Clackamas County. We operate the only family shelter in the county. We're actually expanding that as part of a larger renovation of our current office and campus area, so that new campus is getting put in actually near Milwaukee High School. That's going to include 28 units affordable and then a nine-unit shelter there as well. So, you know, you can see some of our data there, but we develop affordable properties exclusively all over the state, and have a few here in the county. So go to that next one, please. And, you know, kind of our mission statement is creating opportunity through housing. We are a nonprofit affordable housing developer, and then we also own and operate all the housing in our portfolio. So, yeah, we're very much attached with the properties that we're working on, including this development. And a few notes there, our operation Home Base, that's part of our organization, that's actually a homeless intervention and prevention services, so we, it runs the gamut, from helping out with late fees on rent, finding, you know, if somebody is needing a place to, you know, let's say park an RV while they're transitioning into apartments, you know, at local churches, there's a lot of things that that part of our organization works on to really funnel homeless folks and get them off the streets into decent housing. So, next slide. So kind of drilling down a little bit into our developments here in the county, we have eight properties in Clackamas County, you can see there. They're kind of spread out between family properties and senior properties. And there's a picture of the River Glen Apartments, the paint scheme has since changed, but that's the layout there. And for this particular project, we coordinate development in-house, I'm on the development team for this project, and then we also have two partners. One is our general contractor, that's LMC Construction, and then our architect is Bergson Delaney. Both of them have extensive experience with affordable housing development, and we've worked with both of them on numerous projects. And so a few little details, and I know Melissa touched on this, five buildings on the complex currently, 44 units. You can see kind of the breakout there, bedroom count. So currently, we have a laundry room slash community space, which is just a hot, noisy laundry room that, you know, we can pull some chairs into if we need to have a resident meeting. Our last one that we had there was back in August, and that was in regards to relocation, and that definitely, you know, was very evident why we're building this new office space, is because we're going to actually move the current office, which shares that laundry area, out of there into the new office building. All the machines can go into that, what is now the office, and we can actually have a dedicated community space with its own HVAC system, that's quieter, more comfortable, is actually something that residents will want to use, especially in the summertime if residents don't have air conditioning in their own units, they can, you know, come down there. So, yeah, that's kind of our, you know, impetus behind constructing the new office. And a few facts about residents here, all these folks are at, going to be, I think I would say, all but one resident is below 60% of area median income, I think that one resident is at 80%. So this is truly an affordable property exclusively. You can see our average household income is around $20,000, which isn't much. And we have 103 residents here, so a mix of seniors, families, so it's, you know, it's a pretty diverse property and population that's there. And one of the things that, as an organization, that we really focus on is not just building a property and warehousing people there, but also providing services to the folks that are there. We have an in-house resident services team that goes out to these properties. I rarely see them in the office, because that's where they spend most of their time. And they coordinate with residents on a variety of things, I think I'll touch on that more here on the next couple of slides. So this is kind of the resident services approach to working with folks on our properties. So when people move in initially, they'll work with them to kind of identify barriers that have kind of kept them from accessing housing in the past, or holding on to housing. If folks have evictions in their past, or issues with other property management, we really try and work with them from the moment they get to our properties, so that they don't run into those issues when they come and live on our properties. We also, our resident services folks kind of act as a liaison between a resident and a variety of community support networks, whether that's, you know, providing diapers for a family, or if somebody needs help with bus passes, you know, education opportunities, job training, they really are a wealth of community access for a resident. Obviously, all of this is voluntary, so it's, we don't ever, you know, force residents to do any of this, but it's definitely one of those things where all of our resident services staff makes a concerted effort to approach each resident, let them know about the services that we offer, and then if there's anything that they can do, they'll definitely help them out with that. And so, yeah, any questions about the development?
I have one.
Yeah.
Is the manager a resident there?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, because, and I'm not sure about the exact description for this building that's going in, but it seems to me I saw in here an ADU somewhere, is that correct?
No.
No, okay.
Yeah, and it may, we are putting in three new, we're actually renovating three of the existing units to make them ADA compliant, so may have seen, that may have merged somewhere in the document.
The other night when I drove through, there were two people out smoking that were in wheelchairs.
Yeah, yeah, and we do have, we've got a few residents that we've, you know, kind of made some accommodations for as far as installing ramps, and, you know, we're trying to make that more permanent as part of this upgrade.
So are you guys a 301(c)?
We are, yes.
So explain what a 301 is.
So as far as, you know, I'm not an accountant, so I can't, I can't talk specifics there, but we basically just keep our, any of our revenues go back into operations and property, and are not distributed out to any shareholders or anything like that.
So the smoking area, so there's no smoking allowed on the property, which includes inside of any of the apartments, correct?
Correct, currently.
And so have you had issues with residents that are smoking in their apartments, and if so, are they evicted, or how do you handle that?
So typically, on something like that, if we have, you know, it normally starts off as, you know, somebody comes to property management and says, "My neighbor is, I think they're smoking in their apartment." And so property management will normally just do a courtesy call of, "Hey, this is a non-smoking property, you know, please don't smoke in your unit." If it's a repeat thing, they may get a lease violation. That's not, obviously, the same as an eviction. Anytime this issue comes up though, it's normally our resident services folks get flagged for that, and we'll work with the resident to, you know, figure out a reasonable accommodation. And so that's, I think, you know, on this site in particular, with, you know, folks kind of congregating on the sidewalk and the right-of-way for smoking, is we, you know, wanted to actually dedicate an area that's, you know, accessible, you know, like by residents in the northwest corner of the property, but actually put that on the property, it's under a tree, so, and actually, would it be possible to pull that site map back up off of Melissa's presentation, if that's not too much trouble? But yeah, I think, you know, our thinking there is that we, you know, we'll actually have a place on-site that, you know, residents can use, because it's, you know, it's going to happen, just because, you know, there isn't one right now doesn't mean residents aren't smoking, so.
So you think that's going to, have you discussed, and that's in conjunction with the building of this office space or this office building, have you discussed at all if it's a covered smoking area?
We have not discussed as far as down to that level of specificity on that.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you look at the northwest corner, right there.
Okay.
Is roughly where that area is going to go, and that's mostly, exact location is going to be, you know, calculated based off of distances from operable windows, because obviously we don't want, you know, smoke blowing into people's units from that.
And that's at the end of the street there where the fence is, so the street just ends right there in that corner, correct?
Correct, yes.
And that's behind one of the car lots, right there?
Yeah, yeah, that's the, I think the Airstream dealership.
You don't want cigarette butts going in the stream.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Who would be responsible for maintaining the smoking area?
That would be property management staff, yeah, and we've got some great maintenance staff out there.
Can you, so is the playground area where the new building is going to be?
It's actually going to share that area, and I can get that out here as well.
And that's where the current play structure is?
Yeah, so the current play structure is here.
Right.
The new office will be going kind of adjacent to it, so the play structure will remain the place, so we're not getting rid of that.
And you can see on the site plan there that we do have a dedicated handicap space that will come as part of that new office build.
Will there be any plumbing in the?
So there's actually, there's no plumbing in the new office.
Okay, that's what I'm... Okay, that's what I'm seeing, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yeah. All restroom facilities will stay in the existing laundry community area.
Okay.
And then that new office will house, obviously, the property management staff, as well as an office for our resident services folks.
And storage?
Yes.
So you're just gonna have electrical in there, no plumbing whatsoever?
Correct.
Sorry, trying to find that page again.
What's the plan for heating and cooling?
Uh, so that's gonna be a two-port mini-split ductless heat pump, and that will do heating as well as cooling. And then we're also doing a single-port heat pump in the community space, so that will be heated and cooled as well.
How many feet are you set back from, because I remember when looking, I looked directly at the play structure, and where the darker color area, that's the units, the apartment units.
Mm-hmm.
How many feet is the setback for this new office?
From the, from the play structure?
From the building, because there, I noticed there was sidewalks that basically surrounded where the play area was, that, you know, went into the different apartment units.
Right.
How many, how many feet is it away from the apartment structure?
I wanna say about twenty-five or so, but the civil in the plan set, C, one of the civil plans, C, you know, zero through five point one, I believe calls out that dimension there.
Did you already meet with the fire department as part of the pre-application process?
Uh, I'm actually talking with them right now, in regards to a check valve on a fire lateral.
And did they, did they talk to you, like, do you know what areas the truck is able to get to?
Um, I actually do not.
Okay.
Mike didn't have any other concerns, other than the fire duct, duct valve?
The lateral.
Lateral, sorry.
Yeah.
It's actually being public work.
Public work, yeah. Oh, okay.
It doesn't have a check valve on it, since it's a private item, it would be required. And as far as access, it can access everywhere that is gray, and access pretty much all the apartments.
Okay, that's good.
So the, your, the building next door to you, is that also low-income housing? Or, I mean, the complex that's next, back lot?
Yeah, I actually don't know. Yeah.
I wondered the same thing.
Yes. Anybody else?
Do you, so did you notify your residents about this meeting?
Uh, we did, we did not. We have had contact with them, we had a meeting, an initial tenant meeting in the spring. We sent out, also sent out what's called a general information notice about the rehab, and kind of scope, rough timing, that's obviously dependent on HUD there. And we have, we've contracted with a relocation consultant, so during the work, there's gonna be some phases where we'll be inside residence units, and we're gonna actually relocate them. And it's between two and four weeks per building that we'll do that. So, yeah, it's definitely a process where we've been in touch on that aspect of it.
Anybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton.
Does any member of the public wish to speak in favor of the application? Please state your name and address for the record.
Andre Langston, fourteen oh five Windsor. Just based on the information provided the city council regarding rent burdened communities, per the two thousand sixteen report, we were, city of Gladstone was roughly like thirty-eight percent, I believe. Haven't seen the new survey that was done. I believe they had to have it done by the thirty-first, and then they were supposed to report on that by the end of December. Haven't seen the new survey, so I'm not sure where that's at yet.
There is some stuff in the works on that.
Yeah, yeah. So, my main point is just that, you know, this is obviously a good resource for our community, and people who have a hard time affording rents that are continually riding. And just as it's important to continue to add opportunity for people, it's important to sustain those particular items that we already, that already exist, so. That's, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you.
To follow up with that, I'd say, I appreciate that it's being kept up, and that it's being, you know, kept up on the outside and inside. I do think it's a good thing, too.
Good. Would anyone like to speak against the application? Seeing no one. Would anyone like to provide neutral testimony? Just, you're not in favor or opposed, you just wanna make a comment about the application? No one? Would the applicant like to provide rebuttal testimony?
Being done.
Okay. The staff have anything to add or wish to recap?
Just that we appreciate the coordination from the applicant, that made meeting the code requirements easier, and just improving the site as a whole.
Does any member of the commission have any questions regarding clarification of the testimony to this point? If there are no further questions, I will close the public testimony portion of this hearing.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing, Z zero four eight one dash one eight dash D.
Second.
Malachi and Libby. Public hearing's clo, or let's take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no or nay. None opposed, the hearing's closed. The public hearing is now closed. Let's deliberate. Any further questions of staff from the commission, and discussion by the commission?
I think all of this looks good. My only, if you wanna call it a concern or issue, is depending on if they're gonna put some sort of cover for the smoking area, and if so, a way to make sure that people don't slick their butts down into the creek. Whether there's a screen, or something, or other.
Melissa, is there any?
Just because it is a watershed.
Are there any codes that pertain to smoking areas at all that you know? I mean, it's less than four hundred square feet, obviously.
I'm not sure if it would even need a building permit, or be subject to Oregon structural code, but they are adding receptacles for cigarette butts, is my understanding. That was the proposal communicated to us. There is currently a chain-link fence separating the property line from the waterway, from the wetland. I mean, you can still, obviously, flick things through the chain-link fence.
Yeah.
But if there's revegetation there, it could create a buffer from the waterway, in some sense. So it would be an improvement, at least from the current situation, where there's no real receptacle or management of the smoking, so.
That is such a
Comments?
Nice wetland, but I don't wanna see it polluted.
I, I think this looks good. I, the presentation he gave, I think, I did not even know about your organization, and I think it all looks really good. As far as the comment he just made, I think the receptacle being there will be helpful. I would not want them to put any screening on that fence, because it's gonna block the view of nature there, and doesn't really stop any humidity. But I think the receptacle there would help.
I would request that you consider the covered, doing a covering like he suggested, but obviously, it's not gonna be a requirement.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Melissa, this River Glen Apartments rehabilitation manual, this big thick thing we got, really has nothing to do with the application that we're looking at. This is just part of their project to renovate the building. So this is not really relevant to what we're doing tonight?
Correct, there was miscommunication on my end. This was not supposed to be distributed. It's just the site plan that you were supposed to receive today.
Can these be recycled, by any chance? Do you have future?
You have a use for them.
I would have a use for one.
There you go.
I hate to see good paper go to waste.
Yes.
This page matters for us, and the site plan, but mostly, also applies to the rest of the rehab, right?
Yeah.
Any more comments?
Are you willing to entertain the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we approve Z zero four eight one dash one eight dash D, Z zero four eight two dash one eight dash HMV, and Z zero four eight four dash one eight dash WBV, as it was applied for.
I would second that motion.
Uh, Smith and Natalie Smith, let's do a roll, please.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Malachi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wentz?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Rollatt?
Yes. Done. Congratulations.
Okay.
All right.
And by the way, that area does look rather clean and nice. I have to concur. The two times I drove through, I was like, wow, they really keep this up.
We, yeah.
We appreciate that in our community, yeah.
I will say, your residents were very, you know, I was there, and they're like, "Why is there somebody here?"
Yeah, yeah.
So as far as the whole safety, security thing, I think that was good.
They, yeah, they're very aware of who's onsite, and, yeah, so.
It's a good thing, though.
It is, yeah. We definitely, yeah, we work on building, not just housing, but also a community to go with.
Yeah, when I was there, there was a lady with a couple of small children, and I, you know, I'm creeping in there slowly as I can, and she smiled and waved, you know, so it's like, you know, I was pretty impressed, and, you know, I remember when they built that building, and I had friends that lived there when it was new. And I had no idea about your organization and stuff. And the thing with the temporary shelter and stuff like that, it's phenomenal.
Yeah.
So I, you know, commend you on your organization. Visiting your offices, I was very impressed. Your office manager was very professional. Your layout there is great, and that's just temporary for you, apparently. And I thought, wow, you know, when I had my business, if I had an office that looked like that, I'd be pretty proud of that.
Yeah.
So, good job.
Yeah, well, and I think, and, you know, more broadly, is we have, as you saw on the slide, about twenty-five hundred units throughout the state, and we have eight hundred more in our pipeline over the next three years, so we're not, we're not letting up as far as building more of local housing.
Is your organization similar to any others that are out there? Or have others kind of used you as a role model as to how to start providing affordable housing?
So there's a, there's a few, there's definitely some that kind of encompass all those services. They're more metro-exclusive, or Portland-exclusive. We're one of the only statewide providers of affordable housing and resident services. And, you know, there, there's a large organization, Bridge Housing, out of California, that set up offices here and in Seattle. They kinda have a much larger reach, but.
But you're very private.
Um, yeah, yeah, as far as, we don't have, you know, any shareholders, or anything like that, so. And, yeah, I mean, I would like to say that our organization has been a model for others, because we've been around for thirty-five years now, so.
Thank you very much.
And the best part is, is you're in our community. We appreciate that.
Yeah.
All of our Section Eight was managed through them.
Does, any of your items in the pipeline pertain to this area?
Um, so, I'm trying to.
Without any specifics, I mean, do you have other plans for Gladstone in the future?
Let's see. So our campus development is in Milwaukee, and that's the twenty units affordable. Gladstone, in particular, we don't have anything, but we always are on the lookout for either, you know, vacant sites, or existing, you know, housing that needs preservation, so.
Okay.
All right. Um, is there any other business from the public? Anybody like to speak about anything at all? All right, just come up and state your name and address for the record.
So, I presented, so I'm Claire Coy, sixty-three twenty-nine Glen Echo Avenue. I presented to you guys last month, and then I went and visited with the council on the same issue about the structure at my house, and putting that up. And, so, I'm kinda confused about where it was left with them. And that's because they said, you know, "She has some good points, because she comes to us as a resident of the community concerned for how she's doing it, if she's doing it right, and the steps she should take. And we should afford her some grace and flexibility." And that's pretty much where it was left. And so.
Tom, I think you voted on that resolution, and it was like, there was a no vote, so the second reading is at the next city council.
Yeah, so there's, that's what's gonna happen. So there's gonna be a second reading, and then vote again. But it isn't so much about whether the law comes into effect, as I was there to talk about kind of my specific issue, and going in and doing the variance process was gonna be, I found out, nine hundred dollars. And then, there, being there on that non, what is it, a non-maintained local access road.
I think Melissa was gonna look into that for you.
Yeah, and so what I was told about that was just that, by the county, is that I should save my nine hundred dollars, because down the road, when it needs paving and maintenance, it would be up to me to take care of it, since the road is non-maintained. And it just kinda puts kind of a sour spot in my mouth, about nine hundred dollars at all, because no one has an expense in the street at all, and never will, except for me, as a resident, it sounds like.
Well, I think the way that works is if they do, you know, spend money on that road, that it's split between the homeowners, the property owners that about that road?
Yeah.
Is that right?
That's my understanding. It sounds like that's what county staff told you. Yeah, they just kinda told me that they just don't maintain it. There's just nothing that, the only thing that they've ever done, and it was at my request, was they came out and put this like berm kind of thing, because we have no underground water.
No storm drains.
There's no storm drains, right? So the, the water was running from all of the neighboring properties, and the ones behind me, like, into our foundation. So we needed something, because it's just where we are at on the, and that we kinda get, because we're kind of in a bit of a valley coming down Glen Echo, and then it kinda goes, you know, we just get a lot of water there. And so, they had to put a berm on the left side of the house, and then they had to put a berm on the right side of the house, so that the water that comes from the neighboring street, and then this side street, is encouraged to go to the drains, instead of to our house. And so, but, I just wondered if you guys, I know you said you'd seen the meeting, you know, they just kinda left it, maybe we're coming back to it next month, and I just.
They voted on it, and then because there's a no vote, they have to do a second reading?
Yeah.
And then they'll vote again to adopt it?
Right.
Because there was only one no.
Right.
There was two.
Was there two?
There was two.
Yeah, there, Stample and, um.
Reisner.
Reisner voted no. So there's two no votes, so it needs a second reading, otherwise, you know.
Right, so I've got, so I've kinda got two things going, right? Because it's not all about the, the thing of the structures coming in. It's not all about that law. It's partly about that, and it's partly about what I'm doing specifically at my house. I got two whole separate things. As I started working on the thing at my house, and talking to some other concerned community members, I heard a lot of people that were real upset about it, so I started doing that petition thing. Ended up meeting two hundred neighbors. It was cool. And then it just got me, you know, excited about being more involved in this kind of stuff, and getting out and meeting people, and helping people through problems. So I guess the, the point of why I came up to talk to you guys is, where do you think I go now? Do I just go, because where I was left was, well, she has some good points, we should afford these citizens some flexibility, nine hundred dollars is a lot of money, I heard. They were gonna look and see if the city ever had their own fees, since we, since we have a county planner. I mean, that's, we're, then I, I'm stuck with the county fees, even though it's. I mean, that's, we're, then I, I'm stuck with the county fees, even though it's a city function. So they were gonna look at that, um...
Melissa, at this point...
So many things, and I, she was actually gonna work on getting me some answers, and I said, you know, I can also just go to coffee with a counselor, ask more questions.
So I think right now, they vote, when they do the second reading, if they vote no, does that just kill the thing, or? So at this point, when they do the second reading at the next city council meeting, if, if, you know, they get more people voting no than yes, then it'll die.
Right.
That code, and then at that point, I can't tell you what you can do or not do, and it's probably something that, you know, I don't know who could give you advice on that.
Right.
And I do believe staff is gonna be getting back to you on your...
You think so?
Yes.
Okay, I just kinda wondered, because I was like, well, should I ask you guys? Because definitely when I went, and I forget, going back and forth between these meetings, that when I went to the city council meeting, I'm like, well, they don't talk that much, do they? This is cooler to me, the fact that you get to ask a question, there's an answer, and you talk, you know, the, this is cooler to me. Like, the exchange and getting...
The city council has to be more formal than the planning commission.
Yeah, and getting more, like, you're actually working on what it is that you're there to talk about, and not just pushing it forward to next month.
If I could weigh in really quick, just on one thing. So the, the city adopted through ordinance, the county's fee schedule, full sale.
Right, no, and I knew that, you said that.
So what we're looking at right now is if the county fee schedule has any type of waiver provision that the planning commission, or the city or county council could normally waive the fee for someone, or vote to waive the fee, so we're looking into that, if that's a possibility.
Okay, that's helpful.
If that is, I'll let you know, and you could bring it up, if they pass it, so.
So December 11th is the meeting, and it will roll around real fast, right after Thanksgiving. So, will I know that with enough notice to kinda have an idea? Because I'm gonna probably have to present again.
Yeah, someone, another staff member in my office is looking into it, and I think she's gonna be able to get back to me next week.
Sounds like both of you have information you're trying to get for her. Is there a specific person that should be her point of contact?
Sounds like Tammy's trying to get information about the original fee schedule, right?
Correct, I'm trying to get answers to her questions from staff, so we can follow up with her.
Okay, so you'll be a point of contact for her?
She's been in contact with me, and I've been trying, we're working on it, we haven't...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm happy to feed Tammy that information, and she can, she can coordinate, actually.
And for sure, you're probably gonna wanna go to the meeting and fill in...
Oh, yeah, no, I would, absolutely, I'll be there. They're so fun, it's just one a month.
We tried to be helpful.
No, it was, it was very helpful, and then I went, and, and so are they, I mean, there was a lot of good comments, like I say. The, the thing about, you know, $900 is a lot of money, because it is to anybody that's putting up a, not very much more than that building, the right to apply. Then it's, it's paid upfront, and unfortunately, you don't get it back if you're denied, so. There was just all kinds of things about it, that I was like, ooh, that's, that's too risky of a chunk of money for me to put out there, but... Yeah, but it sounds like they're looking into some answers, so I just wanted to ask you guys what you thought maybe the next move was, if it was, you know, go to the meeting and see what happens from there, but...
She'll guide you.
There were a lot of folks that were there to talk that night that didn't, because they didn't fill out a card, they didn't know about the card, and so, I'm like, well, that's too bad, the room was packed, there was people standing in the back, and that were there to talk on the structure.
The more people, the more citizens that you come in contact with, please encourage them to come to the meetings, because that's how they're gonna get the...
Came, and then they didn't talk.
Well, but the more people that come will get educated and be familiar with how it works, and then share it with their neighbors as well, so...
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just didn't, I forgot the part about the card, or they were, you know, they'd never been to a meeting, so they were confused about the card, or whatever, but later on, I talked to them, and I'm like...
I think everybody, you know, probably that spoke represented most of the people in there, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, we appreciate that you're involved.
Yeah, no, absolutely, thank you guys for the time.
We appreciate your public involvement in encouraging other people.
Yeah, thank you.
And drill.
And drill.
Get back up here.
Yeah, you can go.
Yeah. We're done voting on it.
Yeah, you're back, all right. Good point, thank you. I just forgot he was even out there.
I was just observing.
It's like personal.
All right. Business from the commission?
I have none.
I don't think I have any either.
So, I would like us to look into, it's nothing on you, but the issue with the residents of apartment complexes in general not getting notifications from us. Because, you know, you said that we only notify the owner of the property, which leaves a lot of people not getting notifications of things they may care about. So I think we should look into a better way of handling that.
Definitely something to bring up, it is a code requirement in the notification section of the code that we just do the property owners, so it would have to be a text amendment to change the notification requirement, so...
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with us working through how to do that, but I think we also need to look into how we would technically do it as well. So if we could figure out, you know, how, you know, if we could verify that we would be able to do it, then I think we should pursue doing the text amendment for that.
I mean, county staff regularly notices a broader, you know, range of people, and sends out more notifications than just the city does, we have the capacity. However, it would have to be a text amendment that you initiate, and, you know, have a working session.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fine, because if this wasn't about their own complex, if it was about something else in their area, a lot of people wouldn't know about it, wouldn't show up to the meeting, that's not great.
Right.
So, we need to do our best to make sure everybody's notified who's in the proper range.
I agree, it's just, and that's something that staff can do till it's in the code, so...
Including putting it in the news, city newsletter.
So, what do we need to do next step? Do we need to put around a agenda to discuss that, or walk through that?
Yep, you could, we can walk through and just have a working session on what that means, what sections of the code we would need to...
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine with me.
Okay, so let's get that on, whatever we're next, not super busy.
I'm not sure if we're gonna have an item on for December. And with the holidays and everything, we may just move to January to put it on, would that be okay?
I don't think it's a rush, but I do think we wanna get it done.
I agree.
Yeah, I think we have some, you know, some ideas about noticing. In Oregon, one of the things you can do is actually pound a sign out on the property. I mean, there's a million ways that notices are covered under the law. I just wanna comment on the staff reports, if you guys, you know, remember, and I was on the planning commission for a number of years in the 2000s, up to 2006, I think. Like eight or nine or 10 years, something like that. And the staff reports previous to when Melissa came were pretty consistent. Well, I've been back about two years again, and nothing really changed as far as staff reports until now. And they are so much better, you know, the staff reports from the planner, and the minutes to the meetings are very, very comprehensive, instead of like a paragraph. You could actually read those minutes, not having been at the meeting, and have a good idea of what's going on. So, we're doing a lot better job on that.
Thank you.
Is there any way you...
I have nothing to say, thank you.
Is there any way you can let this, the...
The subscriber, yep.
Yeah, that we appreciate and highly value.
You're doing that right now as well.
You're doing an awesome job, keep it up.
I don't have any comments.
All right, so you wanna, wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn the planning commission meeting.
Moved by Natalie Smith, and seconded by Libby Wentz, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no or nay. Done. Thank you.